Mayor Prokhem. She stepped down November 20th from being mayor. Publicly, she wrote this and sent it out publicly.
I didn't write it.
You're in charge. You didn't write it?
No. It was a text.
Are you getting this?
Yeah.
Good. You didn't write it?
No.
Who wrote it then?
It was a text.
A text, okay. You texted.
And I didn't.
Texted?
Before the board.
You don't have to put it out publicly.
Yes, she did.
Okay. You guys know already?
Okay, at 6:30, we're gonna call the meeting to order. First thing we're gonna do is low call. Ms. Sarah? Mayor Nisha Smith, here. Councilwoman Amanda Mendley, here. Councilwoman James Smith, here. Councilwoman Christina DuRado, here. Councilwoman Perry Mendley, here. Mayor Prokhem Donmire, here.
Here.
Mary Hapton. Okay. We will stand for the indication. Donmire, would you like to say anything?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today, Father God. We thank you that you are the King of the universe, Father God, the Creator of the heavens and the earth, Father God. We ask for your presence, the Holy Spirit to be here with us today during this meeting, Father God. We ask for your peace to be with us today, Father God, during this meeting. We ask for your guidance, your knowledge, and your wisdom to be shared with us during this meeting, Father God. And we thank you so much for giving your Son and sacrifices so that we may have our lives and our freedoms. Father God, we praise you in the mighty name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen.
With the pledge of allegiance and judgment, angels to the right, on the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number five. Consider impossible action on the use of the remaining credits in emergency management grant. I think we started out here and we came up with another idea to build the roof on this. I think we just have about $940 left in that account, and that would take care of the tin that we need to put on there. Is there any other suggestions or ideas?
I've got whatever you call it. I've did the comments. Basically, this is what we're talking about. Of course, we don't have to build, so I can't take pictures. That's what we're talking about, building on the back of the shed.
Are the...how long are these?
They come in 20 foot.
See, that's what's gonna be the most expensive.
And I've got a list there of what it takes to build that.
We only have $940.
I priced it at 6-inch c10 when I did it before.
For sure, 310.
No, I didn't price that.
That is very expensive. That's why we decided to do with that...what is that, James? Gable picture, what did you say?
Gable. Gable roof.
Uh-huh. So we can buy the eight-foot tin instead of the longer one because it's cheaper.
Yeah, I think...
Does that make sense?
Dennis was looking at something the other day for $2.50 a foot, and which that comes out, there's what, 16-foot span? We can get it all in one length where you don't have to fly.
But it's more expensive.
Well, they're still $2.50 a foot, no matter what.
Okay. We can check into this.
Well, I mean, that's what it is. It's just a suggestion.
Because I have...I know we did try both guides. We just went online through Home Depot to get the prices for the 16-foot and then for the eight-foot. So we were thinking it might work to do it with eight-foot. But we can definitely get prices and...
The only thing is, is this metal will take a longer span. And we're talking about from the side to the other side of the wall. Or it's almost 20-foot clear span. This right here with the six-inch c10, we weld it to the top, bolt it to the concrete floor with a four-inch post that I have...
Do we have somebody that could be doing it?
Well, I can as long as I wear my glasses.
You're gonna have to build it because we don't have a welder.
Thanks a lot.
No. No, P. Dessa.
I can, and I can get volunteers. But if this is just a suggestion, this is actually, you know, just a picture of what it would look like. And, you know, we've got several pictures. That's what it basically looked like. It's just gonna be a shed. The reason what I was thinking, the way we were talking about doing it, if this is framed up flush with the building, later on, we can enclose it. All we have to do is set it up and enclose it. But with the sidewalk on it, you gotta wonder where you have the structure down. That's each wall, and then the sidewalk will be an overhang. This was just my idea, and it was a simple, fast deal.
Did y'all happen to see that one thing that Julio built for Alex over there? That's what we were thinking right here.
Okay, but the cost of wood is just almost exactly the same as metal.
Do you have any input, Ms. Sarah?
I mean, I have the prices right there of what it costs to do that. I mean, and we can build whatever it's gonna go down.
We're gonna wind up being about the same either way with the metal. If you're just using best because you don't need as much. With wood, you could have a little bit more in order to support the weight.
That was my thinking, just faster, easier, less material. And like I said, I've got some prices there. It came out to $5.80, $1.34 just for the metal material. That's not counting sheet metal. That leaves us enough to buy the tin.
Okay, we'll...
But that's just...this is a suggestion. I mean, if anybody needs to see, this is kind of what we're talking about putting on the back. It's not exactly like this because we don't have to build the entire front.
Can the opponent take a look at it? You know, this is our building.
Sorry.
Would like to have a look at it, maybe input?
Okay, we can definitely get a price on the tin, and maybe we will let Sarah know once we get a price, and we can go from there with everybody. That's...are you good with that?
We're gonna make a motion on that. We're gonna actually do the assembly. Building, we can decide later how we wanna do it. So make a motion that we do pass, that we do use this on that, and then we can decide what we're...how we're gonna build it.
So we are building a back porch? That's what we're gonna do?
Yes, yes, yeah. And then how we do that, we can discuss, and then vote on that, etc.
Is that good with everybody?
Now, everybody will look at the details of the call.
I just have a question. So if it's gonna be like this, it's...so it's literally just gonna be covering?
Just a cover.
So it's gonna be all open? So where are you talking about wood and metal?
Well, the difference between wood and metal.
As far as the beams?
As far as the whole structure.
Okay.
You know, and we...once...my idea, if we build it out of metal, we can wait and get the tin later and cover it. But I'd like to paint it to match the trim out here. That way, it'll kind of go along with the building. It's just a carport, basically all it is. But we can close it in later and add it to the building like we've got on special floor later when we have to go outside. We don't have to go on to the smell-smelling building out there.
So, but this would...the top, you're not saying for it to be wood, the top would be metal?
Right.
The top, everything would be metal.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything.
For out here, that I think is the best choice, like the longevity of it.
Well, I mean, treaty wood's gonna last a long time. But the cost, it takes less to do this than it would to do wooden one. I mean, but that's what we're voting on later. We'll just decide to do the deal that we're gonna use it to spend it on that, and then we'll decide what we wanna do. I mean, this is just a fast structure because it takes less...two people can knock this out in a day.
We'll need a motion?
I'll make the motion that we pass for the building.
Okay.
Because that's basically all we're doing tonight.
Can we get a second? How...okay, Amanda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We will be getting a little bit more information for a porch in the back. Okay, number six. Approve or disapprove an amendment to the water rate ordinance to include an increase of $1 per gallons used after the first 3,000 gallons from $2.50 per 1,000 gallons to $3.50 per 1,000 gallons.
You can only go up 5% according to the Public Utility Commission of Texas, and that's 40%.
An increase...excuse me, Mr. Whitaker, please. We're trying to have a meeting. Per 1,000 gallons and an increase of rates after 25,000 gallons. I need to decide whether we're going to go with it after the 25,000 gallons. Yes, please.
Okay, and the reason for that is because when I started figuring out the water bills, I noticed that what we're collecting and what Brackettville's charging us is not...it wasn't balancing out. So I called the city of Brackettville to ask what they were charging us, and they informed me that they charged $3.50 per 1,000 after the first 3,000. And that increase was done, and I've got a copy of the ordinance, and I wanted to...
If you will, now this is... I didn't make any copies, but I'm gonna have to share some.
But this increase was done back in 2019. So we've been paying an extra dollar for every 1,000 to the city of Brackettville, and that's coming out of the city's budget. So all we're trying to do is to collect the $3.50 that Brackettville is charging us so that we can balance our books, so that it can balance out and us not be in the red having to compensate for that difference there. So that's the reason for this increase is we're not increasing rates. We're not increasing...the first 3,000 will still remain the same, the $30 for the first 3,000. So the only difference is, and my recommendation is that we do charge the $3.50 because that's what Brackettville is charging us. So...
And when was this...when did they change? When did they raise the rates to $3.50?
They informed me that it was...they changed them in September of 2019.
Wow.
So all this time, the city of Spawford has been paying the difference. So what we're trying to do now is trying to collect what we're being charged. But like I said, the rate, their commercial rate for the first 3,000 gallons is $30 for the first 3,000. So we will also...we'll stay there. We don't have to change that one.
Okay.
That can stay the same.
That's a lot of money from 2019 until now.
Yes, and like I said, I mean, I didn't even catch it the first few months. I had noticed it after we started collecting money, and then it just wasn't... When I started figuring out the water bills from Brackettville at $2.50, I noticed that it wasn't equal the amount that they were charging. So when I caught that, I called them and asked them about it, and they said, "No, y'all are paying $3.50." And so I asked for a copy of the ordinance, and that's when I found out that, yes, they had changed that. And they did that way back in 2019.
Okay.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, we're not taking questions from the audience right now.
This is related to the water.
I'm sorry, we're not taking questions from the audience right now.
There's a lot of meters that has no water going through it, and they're still being charged full price. Doesn't that kind of offset...
We can talk about this after the meeting, but we're not taking anything from the audience right now.
You won't answer any of my questions later anyway.
Let me pass this out because this is also explains a little bit about... There are several...there are a lot of them. We do have several people that do not use, that do not go over the 3,000 gallons. So the $3.50 would not affect them because if they're not going over the 3,000, then the only thing they're gonna pay for is a $30 fee. That paper that I just passed out shows you that, that that's... We have 43, as a matter of fact, 43 customers that do not go over, that stay under the 3,000 gallons. So the $3.50 is going to affect the people that are actually using water. Those that stay under the 3,000, it's not gonna affect them.
But if you're being charged extra by Brackettville...
Excuse me, we're not taking any kind of comments from...
We need to have a talk.
No, I'm not.
It's a democracy, I should be able to talk.
I'm sorry, we're not doing that. That's not the rules.
If the Brackettville charges so much money for overage, whatever, well, if you have all these meters that are using less than the water, they're a lot, it should balance out.
Do y'all want me to call the legislature?
If you would, yeah.
Okay, so with that said, I just need a motion to...
We need to decide what after 25,000.
Oh, that's right. So that's another...I don't know if we need two motions, maybe? One on raising the rate to the $3.50. Okay. And then you can do the next one.
$1.50.
Probably one if you think of it.
Okay. So, okay. Okay. If we're already charging $3.50 over the 3,000, how you're talking about, that should be separate than the 25,000 or 2500 or whatever y'all ever listed down on there. There should be a separate deal to vote on.
That's what I mean.
Then we have to agree on a price after that.
Correct.
And is that per gallon or is it...
Per 1,000, yes.
Per 1,000 gallons.
Per 1,000 gallons. After the 25,000.
Okay.
I know that when we discussed this with the attorney, he said that there was a perimeter within the law that we were allowed to do that for high usage.
Can't be excessive.
Yeah, so 25,000 and more. What number?
Well, just vote on the one and get it out of the way for Ken that we're gonna pass. I'll make a motion that we pass to $3.50 because that's what they're charging us. And second it.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay. Now, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You said opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will be charging the $3.50 per 1,000 after the first 3,000 gallons. Now, we will decide on our increase rate after 25,000 gallons.
Do we have an idea like...
On that page, that second page that I gave y'all, that lets y'all know who's more or less, how many customers are using certain amounts.
Yeah.
The 5,000, those that use 10,000, those that use 15,000, and so on.
So there's not that many that's actually using that much water, it's just very few.
Exactly. So that's not gonna affect very many, just those that are...
And the next question is, is where is it going? I don't know of anybody in this town that's actually using that in the city. And we do have something that's going on the outside. Is that the one that's using it?
No, yeah, it's in the...
Right now, we're just trying to get the 20...we're trying to just do the rate increase.
So we're trying to figure out.
I know. It's a good question.
I didn't have a question.
It's a good question.
So... Do we wanna set it to where we're gonna hinder them from using it? Or do we just set it?
We just need to be able to make some money off of it. I mean, we need to, you know...
Take $5.
We do need to be able to...
Per gallon, and after that, that would be...
Oh, yeah, that's just $1.50 more. You do $5 per cent of dollars or whatever.
But that goes back to my same question.
It also ensures, like, if there's a maintenance concern or anything, because our water system is only made to pump out so much at a point in time, and just in case, like, if it's going, it's a lot of water going out, then we ensure, like, we can always have that money just for any emergency or something, if there needs to be maintenance for the extra that's being used on the water, on our water system.
But not necessarily...
There's a lot of different reasons for that.
Trying to keep everybody's water usage down, you know, to try and...
Concern.
That's what I was trying to say.
Because we are, I mean, we're...water is very precious right now.
So we just need a number. Just need for y'all to come up with a number.
Well, I'll make a motion that we set it at $5. That's not a whole lot over what we're actually at, the $3.50. And that way, it's set for the one to be over the 25,000 or whatever that is. I mean, it's not like we're killing them on it, but if they're using that much water, there must be something they're using it for.
Okay. You got a motion?
So it's $1.50 extra per 1,000?
After the 25,000.
Yes. How do those numbers factor into everything else?
It's low, but it'll help for now. You can always come back to the table with it. Or if you wanted to do $5 more than $3.50, it would be $8.50.
Right, sounds a bit...
25,000. It'd be $5 more. So you just $1.50.
Well...
Well, that just depends on my...I just said make a motion for $5. Now, that's over the $3.50 or is that at the $5, you know, at the set rate of $5 per 1,000? Either way, you know...
Yeah, I think it should be $5 more per $3.50 instead of just $1.
And that would cover, that'd still be $5 that I made the motion on.
Well, you have to explain that because it can be the $5 per 1,000.
But that's what I'm saying, it could be worded two ways. You know, she said over the $3.50, and I just said $5.
Then you're talking about $8.50 per 1,000.
Right. Over the 25,000.
Over 25,000.
And that'd give them a little incentive to control a little bit of it, too. Maybe.
So, but since you have to take all the books and your, you know, you do the finances and everything, what would be like...
Well, like I said, see, that paper right there lets you know how much money is coming in from each... From those that are only using, you know, 1,000, those that are using 3,000, those that are using 5,000. Next to that, it shows you exactly how much money each one of those, how much money is coming in, and then how much we're having to pay Brackettville. Because keep in mind, I mean, we're still having to pay Brackettville for the water that's being used.
Okay. And my other question is, since...and this has to do with this and deciding the number in my mind. Okay, so since we weren't able to qualify for the grant this time, right? Because it wasn't...our points, it wasn't a lot our turn, it wasn't wise to apply for it this time. And there's still things that need to be done to the water tower, other maintenance fees. If this could also help that, to have, to save money, to go towards to cleaning out our water tank and to making sure that all of our meters are properly calibrated because it's part of the water system. So this extra income can be used to ensuring that our water system is running at where it's supposed to and all the meters are where they need to be, right? We can use this money for that?
Definitely. Let me back up a little bit. There was a comment made a while ago, and it's true. There is only a certain percentage that you can go up on the water.
Yes, of course.
So we do need to be careful that we are within that.
Yes, there's legal and fair, of course.
So the $3.50, I've explained to you that's what Brackettville's charging us, we can do that.
Yes.
Going up to $8.50 per 1,000?
I think it's a little bit...
I don't know. We might have to look into that, that's what I'm saying. We can do $5 now and then bring it back to the table once we investigate it a little more. Sometimes when you're raising rates like that, you've gotta have a public hearing. There's procedures if you start going up...
And then we can get too much because then it's gonna affect, people aren't prepared for that.
Right.
Like, it needs to be like a fair so people can start adding that into the budget.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. And then we can also add it into ours to take care of what we need to take care of as far as the water system and the meters are concerned with this extra.
Right.
Okay. And it's a catch-up for all the money we've been losing.
Well, again, there's not many that go over.
Right, there's not that many, so...
It's a little bit...
But it'll help.
Every little bit helps. It's more than what we have now.
Yes, exactly. So with that, do we wanna go back to just $5 per 1,000 for now? And then let me look into it a little bit more, and if we can go higher, then we're considerable.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I'll make a motion on it.
Okay, $5?
Yeah, this is set.
Perry made the motion.
James seconded.
To change the rate from $3.50 to $5 after 25,000 gallons?
Yes, sorry.
Just so I can...
Okay, so Perry made the motion, James seconded it. All in favor to raise the rate to $5 per 1,000 gallons after 25,000? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, consider and possible action on adopting the new list for water meter requests. Adopting a new list, we'd be going by the original list. Adopting the original list that we have.
What is the new original list?
Yes. Okay, so I'm trying to elaborate a little bit on that. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit on that, and I'm going to pass out the original list. This list was created in twenty-fourteen. Okay, these, these were people that were on the waiting list back in, in twenty-fourteen. And, uh, what happened was that, at that time, we kind of already had been told that our system might not be able to support more than sixty-seven connections. Uh, so we kinda held off. The people that got put on the list, we kinda were holding off to make sure that, uh, we were okay with TCQ, so we didn't wanna go over. TCQ came in, did an evaluation of our system in November of twenty-fifteen. And I've got that letter right here, if anybody cares to look at it, where they inform us that our system could not support more than sixty-seven connections. Okay? Uh, I was on that list. As a matter of fact, I was pretty high up on that list, and I had several requests for meters. So unfortunately, I was not able to get my meters. Uh, in twenty-seventeen, when another council took office, they did away with this original list, and they created a list going by people that just submitted written requests instead of people that just signed up, signed their name on the list. As the lawyer informed us, each council has a right to change or do, you know, their rules however they see fit. So there wasn't much we could do. That was a rule that that council came up with. And so we kinda, those of us that were waiting on a meter kinda got pushed to the, pushed aside. I mean, it just, we were taken completely off the list. So with that being said, um, what this, you know, what I'm recommending, the mayor and I talked about it, is to honor the original list, to go back and honor the original list of people that had, you know, given, or had signed up for meters way back in twenty-fourteen and have been waiting all this, this time for the meters. Since then, I've also gone back and I've researched a lot of the minutes from, uh, the previous years. Uh, there was, uh, a couple of people that did request meters, but they withdrew their request. Okay, they had, they withdrew their request. They had requested, you know, four or five meters and, and then withdrew their request. That is also on record. I have a copy of that as well, and y'all are welcome to look at that. Uh, and then that was on records here, um, with the, the former council of the members that did withdraw their, uh, requests. Unfortunately, like I said, there was only sixty-seven meters. That's all that we can support right now. And that kinda leaves me out because we don't have any more meters. We, you know, pretty much, all we had left when the council, um, this new council took office, there was only three available meters. One went to Perry, who had his meter removed. Another one was the, the first person on the list, Nisha Lu, or Nisha Smith, sorry, and Rodrigo Malonado, which he was waiting on a septic system on his. So those were the three people that took priority on, on the list. And those were people that were on the list, which I just didn't listen. And, and, well, Armando Manolala was Gillette, Dennis Gillette. So his was on there since twenty-fourteen. And so that's why those people took priority. If we honored, we went back and, and just honored the original list, those were the people who should have gotten meters in the first place. Unfortunately, if you look at the list, there was one person on there, and we're not gonna, please don't name names, but there was one person on there that had requested, you know, eight meters, actually ten meters, but settled for eight. Uh, redo, again, he won that withdrew two of them and ended up with only eight. Unfortunately, all eight meters were, uh, approved for that one person. Had, and, you know, talking to TCQ about our situation, they said what should have been done was just one, one meter, and then go to the next person on the list, give them a, a meter, go to the next person. Then, once you had, you had meters left over, go back to that person that's requesting more than one meter. And that was a recommendation by TCQ. Unfortunately, I mean, it's too late. We can't go back and correct that.
Other question. So you said there was one person that had eight meters requested?
Ten originally, but, uh, withdrew a couple of the, of the requests and had.
So. From this list and from that list, it, it looks different.
Yeah, very different, yes. And that's what I'm talking about. This list was not honored by a former, uh, council.
Okay.
So they kinda created their own list because they created their own rule.
Which was that list?
Which is this list, yes.
Okay.
And, and their rule was that if they didn't see it, if it wasn't in writing, you know, they, they didn't find letters requesting the meter in writing, then they get, they get their own list. They went on their own list.
Okay. And just, these are numbered, and those aren't numbered in order on who requested, who's first in line?
Well, right.
I mean, it's actually, you didn't create it, so you probably.
No, but, you know, these are not in order. Those are in order by the year, by the year that they were requested.
Sorry, I don't know why I asked. Oh, okay.
So all we need right now is just a motion, if y'all are okay with that, is a motion to honor the original list.
I will make a motion to honor the original that was created in twenty-fourteen, correct?
Correct.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, Dominic made the motion. Perry seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we, motion passes to adopt the original list. Okay, now, number eight, information on the terms for the city election. Ms. Rossis?
Okay, I, I did get it, I had a question, uh, from one of our residents in reference to our election. So I made some phone calls, the mayor made some phone calls, and we were informed that if the election is being held every four years, and we have proof that it, it is held every four years, that's all we need. We don't need, uh, to have an ordinance, we don't need a resolution, we don't need to break to be anywhere else other than we prove that that is what we've been doing, is we've been holding an election every four years. And the only way that that can change is through the council. So if the council decides to change it, then.
And the lawyer actually said that our status on our chapter, it was four years.
Yes.
The lawyer said that.
Yes, and she confirmed it.
Yeah, well, I talked to him a long time ago about that.
And I confirmed it with Texas Municipal League, and I confirmed it with the city secretary of state. And they both said, whatever you guys have been doing, that's what, that's what you go by. Uh, I do have in writing several of the, uh, for three, three elections, which is twelve, what, twelve years? Of the call of elections that we made, that we did stating that the election was for four years. So, that's pretty much all, all we need. Uh, like I said, they said the only way to change it is if the council decides to change it someday, then that's, that's the only way you can change it.
Thank you for that, Ms. Rossis. Okay, we're gonna go down to number nine.
I have a question, Miss May. Why, why was this even needed to be discussed? Like, I, why?
We had questions on that.
Okay.
Okay, number nine, we're gonna do the financial report, and Ms. Rossis has that also.
Okay.
Did everybody get a copy of their financial report?
Do you need it?
Yes, please.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I have a financial report. Water sales, two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven fifty for the month of December. Uh, property taxes, most of them came in in November. I apologize, I wasn't here in November, but in November was, uh, when most of the property taxes came in. Of course, you can see on your financial report, you have October, November, and December, so that you can go back and look at, at any of those months that you'd like to look at. So for December, we only collected a hundred and twenty-six thirty-four for property taxes, two hundred and eighty-four from utility taxes. Our total revenue was two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight fifty-seven. Our expenditures, we paid the city a bracket bill for water, one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-five cents. A water operator, four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, utilities was two hundred and seventy-five thirty-six. The Kenny County collection, eighty-one sixty-four. For the internet, eighty-nine seventy-three. The attorney fees, two hundred and seventy. And city maintenance, it wasn't really maintenance, and the bills are all, a copy of the bills are all here. Y'all are welcome to look through them. It's a copy of all the bills and a copy of all the receipts of the deposits made, if y'all care to look at that. TCQ did send out an annual, uh, bill for two hundred dollars. And that's just, that's what they charge us. That's an annual fee. That's what they charge to come out and, and kinda service and, and kinda keep an eye on us, uh, inspect our, our system.
And answer lots of questions.
So that was two hundred dollars. But since we need, I didn't put in there anywhere for TCQ specific for that bill, I went ahead and we just took it out of city maintenance. For a total of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Again, you'll see our, our operating expenditures, uh, is roughly about a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars more than our revenue. That's where that water is important, that we charge what bracket bill is charging us, because we do need to be able to at least cover our bills. Uh, there is, there is twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-seven cents in the bank account right now.
So how much did you say?
Twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy seventy-seven. Any other questions on the financial report? I hope that's easy to understand.
I like how you write everything down, including the dates. And check the list very thorough.
As you get older, you start to realize you have to write everything down. Because I won't remember. And I make a copy of all the deposits that are made. And that way it kinda helps me to remember who's paid and who hasn't, too.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Good job.
Does anybody else?
Okay, now, with that, ready to move on to number ten, the water report.
Okay, I, I kinda break it down a little bit, I'm trying not to go into too much detail, but enough for everybody to know what's going on. I put the water and maintenance report together, and it covers the latter part of November and December. As most of y'all were aware of, shortly after the water leak was discovered on the main water line, Alex reached out to some of his colleagues to help identify the main line valve that was leaking on one thirty-one, because there was just a little confusion about, the map showed that there was, that there's five release valves on the, on the, on our water system. So they wanted to go in there and make sure that that's not what was leaking, or, you know, before we removed anything. After the mayor and Alex helped assess the water line leak, it was determined that the second water line, I'm sorry, that the two-inch water line that was leaking was a valve that was a temporary measure, a temporary pressure release valve that was part of the installation project when the four-inch water line was installed, as indicated on the distribution map. The valve is no longer needed, and therefore it was capped off. And then, once the assessment was completed and the pressure valve, release valve was capped, Julio volunteered to go and, and cover up the exposed water line, and the project was completed.
And that's where the water line went into the Sauer Ranch off of that.
And we're gonna be looking into more possibilities, you know, if, if there is anything else, because we noticed that there is some water on the, um, what is it, on the west side of the, of the highway. So yes, we will be looking more into that. But that particular valve that was leaking was identified as a pressure release valve that is no longer needed. So what these guys came out and, and what they said is that when the water line was put in, those five pressure release valves were put in to release water as it was coming through, so that it wouldn't blow the line open. So it's, it's not needed anymore. So if they're removed, it, it's okay.
Yeah, it was kinda to rinse it out as they were going with the water on it.
Rinse it out for a lot of years into that Sauer Ranch.
The other thing is, we ran into a little trouble locating a cutoff valve to a certain section of town. Julio's got a better memory than I do, because he remembered that he had, uh, put in the map where the cutoff valves were in town. So he said, just go back, look at your distribution map, and you'll see, my handwriting is in there where I, I marked those cutoff valves. Sure enough, he was able to, we were able to locate them on the distribution map. Uh, once he found it, uh, he was able to identify the location and was able to find and, and cut off that, that valve.
And we were opening it up for him, for Gillette.
Yes, that was the one that we're doing for Gillette. And I know y'all were trying all different kinds of, couldn't, couldn't get it to turn on, so. And the reason for that, the reason for that, and actually, uh, he said, that is, in case we do have to turn the water off on a certain section of town, you don't have to turn off the whole town. So it's just different areas in town that have these certain cutoffs. Uh, Randy did the residuals, uh, from different locations once a week. He did, uh, he flushed the hydrants December the first for the November flushing, and then again on December the thirteenth for the December flushing. So, um, we're getting a little bit better about not leaving the flushing until the end of the month. We're doing it in the middle of the month, so that we don't run into that again where it didn't get flushed in thirty days.
And he likes to be paid in the middle of the month, so we want him to finish his job before he gets paid.
Water samples were taken December the ninth, and, uh, samples were all good. We have those reports as well. Uh, he, uh, Randy did meet with the Third Coast Environmental Service Group to take samples of the water system for the CCR report that, uh, at the end of the report that we have to give out to the citizens.
What, what is that?
We haven't posted it, just.
Yeah, that's something that, uh, he does. They come out, they're from, they're out of Houston, and they come out and they take samples, and then that's the report that we give to our citizens, uh, in, in, in July.
Okay.
So that's when the results are given.
Right, yes. And then AEP replaced some new poles in town. We asked Julio to help to assist, to find the water lines, to mark the water lines for them, so that they wouldn't, you know, accidentally hit a, hit a water line. So he did that. And then, uh, they needed some help just identifying different posts, what different posts were in town, so, um, So we helped with that, Alex helped with that. The mayor and I are keeping track of the water usage, we're checking the master meter weekly in Bracketville and comparing it to our weekly use at the pump house. This would just help us to identify if there's any water loss. So we're just, instead of doing it monthly, we're doing it weekly, we're doing it bi-weekly. If, you know, the mayor drives around, she's looking for leaks, especially with the freeze right now, you never know, you can have a leak anywhere in town. So she drives around making sure we don't see any puddles anywhere, there's not any leaks. Also, meters, sometimes we're having to check meters more than once a month, because we just, we, we see that some of the meters don't, aren't registering normal, you know, like a normal reading. So we stay pretty close, we watch numbers, we check to see if, if all the numbers are consistent. If they're not, then if we can catch it within two weeks instead of thirty days.
Save a lot of money.
Yes.
And water.
Yes, definitely. We did talk to TCQ and they require that all flush hydrants be locked for safety reasons. So the mayor has taken upon herself to start locking the hydrants. When Randy's ready to flush hydrants, he can let us know, we can go and lock them for him and he can flush the hydrants and we lock them back up. Mayor Smith is working on securing all hydrants, and Gates at the pump house is staying compliant with TCQ, drives around checking for leaks. She keeps up with the maintenance at the pump house with the equipment, and of course, the pump house yard, which used to be done by the mayor and James. We have the new meter installation on block thirty-six, it's in progress, the meter has not been installed yet, that's the one that y'all just approved right now, and y'all did approve it two months ago when y'all approved a pending request for a meter. That was approved back in October and then y'all approved it again today by approving that meter, since that meter was the first one on the list. Okay, so the new meter installation on block thirty-six is in progress. Alex volunteered his equipment and it's time to dig the ditch. Mayor Smith and Councilman James Smith completed the digging by hand. And I know that wasn't easy, because y'all ran into rocks. So thus far, the, the installation for this particular meter has not cost the city any money. Okay, it's been done by volunteers, equipment, and that's our goal. Our goal is to keep our expenses down, to volunteer as much as possible, so that we don't have to raise rates, so that people don't have to pay, you know, more than they need to for their water. That is our goal and I, we appreciate all the volunteers for that. The clearing of the city streets is back on track and we'd like to thank Mr. Nathan Koffel for that. He's offered to assist financially. Mr. Koffel, we can't thank you enough, you're providing, providing jobs for the young people in our community. We thank our young people that are out there doing the job. Alex is providing the equipment and the tools. And so we're very, very appreciative of everybody that's pitching in and helping out to keep our costs down. That's what it takes to, to run this little community, to keep, so that it, that burden doesn't fall on our citizens. You know, that's our responsibility, we're gonna do our best to keep that going. So Mr. Koffel, thank you again.
No problem.
Thank you.
And then we're just, all the paperwork that is required by TCQ is being submitted the best that I, the best that I can. And that's all I've got, and just wanna say things are running smoothly. I appreciate everybody's support, everybody's help.
We appreciate your help.
I enjoy it, I enjoy it, this is something I'm very passionate about. I love what I do, love my community, very happy to do it.
All right, we'll move on to number eleven, adoption of the minutes of the meeting dated eleven eighteen twenty-four.
That's just for your records.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I make a motion, we passed the minutes, I'm gonna let it date, but. Eleven eighteen twenty-four.
All in favor?
I'm reading it, sorry guys.
I'm ready to second.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Give me one second, I'm gonna read it, please, I'm sorry.
The adoption of the minutes from the meeting dated eleven eighteen twenty-four has been accepted. Okay, we're at announcement and public comments.
Is it an announcement first or public comments first?
Do we have any announcements? I do have one announcement that we have been having Mr. Whitaker put lots of staples in our new agenda board that we put up for people to put, things that were going on in the community, which it has been just vandalized.
Everybody needs to know that she is trampling on my First Amendment rights.
So we will be taking that down and we will just have an agenda board.
And I'm gonna put tape on it and put.
It will be just for agendas and that's the way we're gonna do it. If anybody has something that you'd like to put on the agenda, you can always bring it to our attention, bring it to us, take it to somebody, and we'll be glad to put it up for y'all.
So why did you remove the previous one that was in to replace it with yours, but now you don't let go put announcements on it?
That's right.
It's been abused.
No, but the previous one wasn't, it didn't belong to you when they took it off?
We took it off because it was a new council and we did a new one, we did our.
So now that you put a new one.
Now we're gonna have public comments and. We have one.
May I make an announcement, please?
Yes.
May, may I, thank you. I am forty-three years old, I am not a politician, I'm a concerned citizen and that's why I ran, to be a part of this council, because of, when, before, when you guys were in office and anybody tried to speak up out of context, nobody was allowed to speak. I would appreciate the same respect from everyone here that we were forced to show. And if anything, respect for each citizen as a part of this community as a whole. If all this drama continues and this fighting, nothing's ever gonna get better here. You guys have grown kids, we have young children that are being raised in this community. What example are we saying for our children? It needs to stop. The conflict and all of the drama needs to stop. And you didn't like people over talking you or speaking when it wasn't a line item on the agenda? Please don't do it to us. Show respect, be the bigger person. If somebody wants to be ignorant and speak out of context, let them, but be the bigger person, you were mayor pro tem. Come on, you guys. What are we doing here? With all due respect, we just moved here.
I know, but that's what, that's what I was gonna.
In twenty twenty. And we're held accountable for the drama, for things that were done before we even moved here. You have to choose sides, all these little cliques, it needs to stop. Are we gonna get along and leave the past in the past? Or are we gonna keep on this feud? It's absolutely ridiculous. Can we please work together to make Spofford an amazing community? Where it's not frustrating or terrible for our children to watch and hear all of the drama and all the gossip. Because you have, there's a great, I, I speak to you.
That liar that passed over, just chasing me around for years.
The meeting's gonna be adjourned, no more.
She, she chased me around live on, on Facebook, many times.
Hey, you just, you just did an ordinance and you didn't resent no one, is that legal? I signed up properly and you didn't let me speak. That's not fair. Raise my hand, no one will listen. We had an ordinance, you had to follow the list. And I did not hear it. And I didn't let me speak. I supposed to follow it. That was the ordinance.
About you, but you're not looking around with Eric.
I am looking at everybody.
This is the stuff that she does, puts this out.
Mr. Whitaker, you twisted that.
She chased me around for everybody here.
You guys keep breaking the law and you lied to us. You're being a liar, you're lying hard and you're just gonna be next on the list. You don't understand what you're doing. That's what I said. Y'all did not let me speak, that's not fair, I signed up, y'all didn't let me, you should not have adjourned. You did not let me speak, I properly signed up. Whitaker, how does that help me? I signed up to speak, I'm true of you, that's my personal business, not your issue.
You're talking about adopting the old.
I am not to say he's honest as in relation to the meter. Yes, you are, you are trampling on my amendment rights. I signed up properly, you didn't let me speak. That's not fair, that's not fair. No, I want, nobody says anything, I want to stop. It's not funny, it's not funny. You don't, and you're talking to me, I know it's much not about that, Jesus, don't we, we don't have time, we have to say. We need to talk about partying, talk to everybody together without getting upset or arguing. Enough is enough, we have to deal with it, we need to deal with all the. We're tired of this. You don't know what you're doing. I'm trying to tell you. It's not fair, you did not follow the ordinance. There are a lot of ornaments, it means to me you didn't follow the ordinance. You're not even on it. I have a different rifle, then I started fighting my shit all day. I'm the very special person here and you know that well. You have to have, you have to have an license.
You have the house certificate.
The one that, oh, here's the hand, there's one. But you had to hurry. He just told you to the bottom of the list. Okay, but you were following the law. Evidence on the law. You guys can do it. Where do you have, I do have. Okay, which is the other one, that's the other one. Which, which one is that? Okay, so I have signed up the one for public speaking, I was being allowed to speak today. And which one is it?
For the one for the agenda, you know, be put on there next.
She has it. Okay, which is the one for the public speaking? Show me. And I have to do it ahead of time and, and wait a whole month to give my comment, even though it has to do with today's. That's censoring our speech.